Welcome everyone to the town of Southwick Select Board meeting for October twentieth, twenty twenty five. We're in the hearing room at Town Hall and also remotely via Zoom and on channel fifteen. This open meeting is being recorded and if anyone else is recording, please advise Russ Anderson. It is six o'clock and we will start with attendance rep.
Doug Moblog.
Ross Anderson.
And then the.
By the way, just to clarify, the United States and the country of the hallway for which stands one mission. The whistle, liberty, justice.
The group with public comments. None? Anyone online with anything from public comment tonight? Looks like none. And we will move right into poll hearing. Verizon, New England petitions for one jointly owned fold to be placed on the east side of the following public way, North Loomis Street. Uh, request permission to locate poles, wires, cables and fixtures, including necessary anchors, guys and other such sustaining and projecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways. North Loomis Street. On the east side of North Loomis Street. Crossing the center line of Arcadia Lane and approximately one hundred five feet southerly from existing pole. And approximately one hundred thirty seven feet northerly from existing poles. Reason, the petition has been initiated to shorten the span between the existing poles and raise the cable and wires. And to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. Due to scheduling conflicts with Verizon, we are opening the public hearing and then we'll be continuing it to eleven ten at six P M when the representative is available. The butters have been notified by mail of the schedule change. And can I get a motion to open the hearing?
Uh huh. Second.
Well, how about Danielle?
Doug Moblog on here. Russ Anderson.
And then can I get a motion to continue this hearing to eleven ten twenty five at six P M?
Uh huh.
Second.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Moblog on yes. Russ Anderson.
New business, we have Joe Mitchell from Westfield Gas and Electric to give us an update on infrastructure and emergency response plans.
Good evening, Select Board members. I'm Joe Mitchell. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Westfield Gas and Electric Department. We are the operator of all gas distribution network in Westfield, but we also operate infrastructure in Southwood. That runs from the um, Southwood Gate Station along the bike path up to the Westfield border. In the town of Southwick, there are actually three gas companies, which is part of the reason why I'm here is a part of our public awareness program. I've been in front of the local emergency planning committee before with some um, emergency response plans, et cetera, for that group. Um, our public awareness program has to do with um, notifying the public, which we do so within two hundred feet of that. Uh, piece of infrastructure I'm talking about on the uh, bike path. We notify all of the neighbors and the butters if they're within two hundred feet. They receive um, information about gas and gas awareness and what to do. Um, and our phone numbers, so some confusion perhaps. In Southwick, if you smell gas, do we call Eversource? Do we call Westfield Genie or do we call um, Tennessee Gas Pipeline? They own the um, transmission pipe. Uh, so in our goal, the Westfield Genie is the safe, reliable operation of infrastructure and um. Part of the DPU required public awareness program is to notify the public, notify emergency responders and to notify municipal officials. So you probably received, maybe you saw it, maybe you didn't. Um, we send these to all the public officials. It talks about pipeline awareness and things like that, and the first responders get this in addition to another um, document. But um, in a recent DPU, they audit a bunch of our programs, including public awareness. And um, one of the things they highlighted recently was that um, myself or no one from my company came and talked to you specifically. And to make sure that you have, you are in possession of our emergency response plan for Westfield Genie. It's roughly, I terrific, uh, great time reading. Uh, it's roughly, uh, it's twenty seven pages and the things it talks about are um, and what are we talking about today is? It has a distribution list of um, the people that act on this plan and operate this plan, including um, the Director of Emergency Op- Emergency Operations, which is myself. Um, it also categorizes the emergencies that maybe um, follow through using this plan as a level one, which is fewer than ten customers. Level two, which is ten to fifty customers and level three, which means greater than fifty or we have to go outside for additional help. Acid, electric, source or something like that. Uh, the plan also includes contact information for all involved parties, including Tennessee Gas Pipeline and Eversource, which are the other two companies operating in Southwood. It outlines uh, investigative procedures, so if there was a leak or an incident, um, the types of procedures we would follow to get things resolved. The response protocols for those different types of grades I talked about. Um, and the emergency scenarios that could come up, such as uh, fires, loss of pressure, civil unrest, natural disasters. And then the final section in this um, document talks about who we report to, so. If identified something, we responded appropriately, then what type of reporting and who we have to let know about this. That includes the National um, National Response Center, the N R C, and Department of Public Utilities. Uh, basically, we have a bunch of different programs for our public awareness, including um. Uh, natural gas safety, damage prevention, which is dig safe and you know, always dial eight one one and carbon monoxide awareness. We do for the public, we have billboards, we have social media, bill inserts, you see the size of our vehicles have it as well. Um, and um. And basically, so trying to cover all of our bases and the DPU identified uh, we had an audit. We get through very, very well. A couple of things they wanted to point out was the fact that um, in amongst other things was we hadn't notified your cells. It was at uh, Westfield City Council last Thursday. And then we also through notifying our emergency responders, um, the Fire Chief, Police Chief, along with Westfield's Fire Chief, Police Chief. This was sent out to absolutely every person uh, on the payroll in those four organizations. So I believe this covers all of our bases. We want to make sure we're doing the right thing for our regulator and so we can safe and effectively operate our infrastructure. I'm happy through the chair if there are any questions.
I assume dispatch has been involved in all of.
Yeah, you bet. Absolutely. And um, and they have a different role. Uh, this is just public awareness, so there are their drills. So we recently did um, an in-house drill um, at Westfield Genie. We're now working with Westfield Emergency Responders. We want to do a larger one incorporating D P W and fire and police and dispatch and everybody else. But yeah, your um, dispatch now the joint, the regional dispatch, yeah, they they're aware of this and I saw them on the last email, so they got this one.
Are there spare copies of those?
Yes, you're welcome to.
So I would like to.
Absolutely. You bet. Uh, this one, I remember it's a kid. This is the one that you can scratch and sniff or like the gas amount. Captain, so we used to give these to the elementary schools, but then the kids would do it and then the whole. They're wait till you get home and you can scratch that and there's all the rest of the stuff there. You'll know why.
Unless you have natural gas in your house, then don't scratch it. It won't be there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
So that, this is the packet that goes to everybody within two hundred feet, essentially from that um, up the bike path on either side. And um, you have my, and I emailed this to all of you earlier this evening. And you have my email address of any other questions. I've I've got tons of material and happy to talk about this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six snowplow rates. Do we have someone online to chat about this? No, we do have a letter from Rich Boza requesting to keep the snowplow contractor rates current from last year's twenty four, twenty five season. And requesting permission to secure applications and insurance certificates. Does anybody have any questions for Rich that you want to?
What does it, was it last year that they hit a problem because of insurance?
Uh, last year we raised the rate and offered the performance bonus so that we could be competitive with neighboring.
Yeah, it worked.
Apparently it's not been a problem. I don't think, the fact that it stopped some people, but but the people that are that carry on plowing. weren't shocked by it.
Yeah, I talked to those guys last week and they they said they were going to come back with the same, basically the same thing. They, I think we lost one contractor and added one contractor this year. And. So I'd, I'd be in favor of keeping it the way it was.
Do you need a motion?
That would be a motion if you're looking for one.
Make them a motion.
Do you want to second his motion?
Return to twenty five.
Okay. Second.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Moblog on yes.
Southwood Fire Department, discuss Nate Shane Hope. Requesting a position, actually he has, has been, has returned to us as a full-time firefighter and team. A rehire. Do you want to come up and say a few things about yourself?
Are we going to make him sing that song? Is it good one?
Here, if you use, then we'll pick a song, all right? Let's see how this goes.
Yeah, the chief said something about um, this will help you get through some training. A lot faster. You want to just give us a?
Um, so I'm in the process of obtaining my paramedic certification. Um, and the Southwood Fire Department's given me and it some time to get through that process. So hopefully I'll have it within the next couple of months and I'll be practicing as a paramedic for the Southwood Fire Department.
So you you are signing on for a five or eight year deal here?
Whatever you need.
At least?
Yes, sir.
You got that at home?
The child is graduating.
When he gets out of high school, we can talk, all right?
All right.
The little guy.
Oh, the little guy.
The little guy.
We're gonna skip some grades.
Where else have you been? Dalton, right?
I was in, uh, so I ended up leaving Southwood to go to Dalton full-time. That was my first full-time adventure. And then I moved down here to be a provisional uh, full-timer for Southwood. And then I got hired on months in full-time and then long enough, now I'm back home. Gotcha. Where I'll be for the next ten years?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
All right. Thank you for coming back.
What's the motion? Is there a motion or is this?
Uh, we are acknowledging his rehire.
Here, are you working here?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Second.
All right. All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Back soon.
Can I just get a quick picture of his family?
Oh, geez. Don't take that all the way to your.
Where are you, little guy? You got dressed up?
No, I'm here.
No, thanks for Shane did too. Here, here's. He's just saying. We don't get that.
I guess you got it.
They don't care about what Shane is talking about all day, you know?
They don't even care if it's working here.
Oh, she's here.
Are we looking?
We always.
When you go into the academy.
Oh. Go back. We'll follow him. Think you're dead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no. Uh. We do not have Krista here in person.
No, she's not here. Um, so Krista, actually you have previously interviewed her.
Yes.
Um, she made it through the cycle and then ended up getting hired full-time. And so she did her time, her her orientation time and one year with her full-time job. So now she's back to pick up where she left off during the per diem stuff here, so. Um, she comes to us going into the Fire Academy, the Career Fire Academy shortly through her full-time gig. Um, been a paramedic a little bit over a year. Local, family lives in town. She could pick up for us all the way.
Okay. So we would be looking for a motion to appoint Krista Downs as a per diem paramedic.
Uh huh. Second.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Moblog on here.
Russ Anderson.
Then we have. Open Space Committee. We have two applicants for the Open Space Committee. Martha Kane. Come on.
I just moved my chairs. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I thought Krista was. I apologize.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Hello, Martha.
So you want to know about me?
So, yeah, just give us um.
Well, I'm a recent, okay, I'm a recent resident to Southwick. I've only been here for three years, but I grew up in Westfield. And uh, got my undergraduate degree in wildlife biology in Massachusetts and then went to Wisconsin to get my master's in resource management and environmental education. And then I moved to North Carolina, where I was for forty-two years. And I worked for the State Fish and Game Agency and the State Park System, uh, doing resource management and environmental education. And then my last job was for the city of Raleigh. I managed their First Nature Preserve, which was a lot of fun because it was under Parks and Recreation. But I was a resource manager and a wildlife biologist, so working with the Parks and Rec people was different and and fun. So I did that for eight years, retired in twenty nineteen. And did a bunch of volunteer work in the city parks and county parks, uh, doing bluebird box monitoring for native cavity nesters. So that's a real interest of mine, you know, being, having a wildlife biology degree. Sometimes we specialize in certain critters and I like birds a lot. So I was doing that and also doing um, uh, raptor rescue and rehabilitation with a local group, which was a lot of fun as well. Um, development in Raleigh started really getting big time, as you can imagine, so many people moving to North Carolina. And three hundred and fifty acres of a clear cut around my little rural home. I lived in a town like Southwick in Franklin County, a neighboring county to Raleigh. And I started being downstream from all this. I started getting flooding in my yard and so I was working with some of the state regulators trying to, you know, help with the logging violations to see if there was anything we could do and unfortunately not. So decided, you know, it's a really good time for me to move home. Cause all my family still live in Westfield. So in twenty twenty-two, um, I moved back here and was able to find a little fixer-upper on South Loomis Street, which is where I live now. And I'm only a mile from the Dismal Broke Wildlife uh, Preserve. So of course I went hiking over there and I saw that their bluebird boxes were in disrepair. So I contacted them and said, do you need any help with your bluebird boxes? So they said yes. So for the past three years, I've been doing bluebird and tree swallow work for several of their properties, the Granby Land Trust. And um, then Holcombe Farm called me and they needed help, so I've been spending a lot of time at Granby, Connecticut instead of here in Southwick. Uh, I do volunteer for Stanley Park, Westfield, and I I lead bird walks for them as a volunteer. And do bird counts over there to help them too, so really enjoy that. So then when I saw the article in the paper where Southwick needed people, sounded like you guys were pretty desperate. Or need just, you know, that, when you put it out in the paper. Yeah. Yeah, so I thought, well, I'll I'll apply and see what happens um, because of my background with Parks and Recreation, State Parks and and city parks and. And my resource management degree that maybe I could be helpful in some way, even though I'm retired and getting older and I, you know. Can't do as much as I used to do, but still really enjoy being outside and doing environmental education with people, so. Yeah, so that's how I got here.
I wonder if you sound very active and. I think you'll be phenomenal for this subcommittee. I think you'll be more than birds, of course. Yeah.
Right, yeah, I knew that when I.
I think with your background, space and recreation report that needs to be up.
Yeah.
I think you'd be a great position.
Well, thanks. So Sabrina told me about it, so I downloaded and started printing out some of it. I do better with, you know, print. And I've started reading it, but I've got a lot to learn, like I say. So.
But you have a lot of other experience outside of the park, yeah, that's great.
Yeah. And just don't fault me for being in the south for forty-two years, y'all.
Uh, we were talking about this a couple weeks ago. I think if they have a high school reunion for my class, they might as well have it in Raleigh, cause everyone from there moved there. So you're following the trend, right?
Yeah.
To this area.
Yes, I am. And Raleigh's through metropolitan, so you don't have the real strong southern accents there. Now, I did start out in Hickory, North Carolina, which is western, and literally kind of talking through their notes like this, so you kind of had to learn it, you know? But if you're a teacher and you work with people, you automatically pick up dialects, you know, and my family had laughed at me for sounding southern, so I quickly tried to. Sound more like I parked my car in the harbor.
You get your own.
Yeah, I've tried.
Okay, any other, any questions? Do appreciate you reading the paper and responding to that. I think you'd be a great position.
Hope so. I'm to help. Yeah.
All right.
Is that it? Can I get off the hawsey?
Sure you can.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a wild guess that this is this gentleman's famous book.
And Mr. Price, would you join us, please?
I I hate to go after Martha. We did the same thing at the Conservation Committee and it won't take you very long to ascertain I'm not nearly as qualified. Yes, um, I saw the ad in the paper also. I think it's actually a Facebook post and I thought it would be a good opportunity to get involved with town and do something productive and whatnot. Um, I live on North Loomis Street.
We got the Loomis covered.
Yep, and um, I believe probably some of you probably knew Seth Kellogg was on the conservation for years and so my wife and I were. Um, fortunate enough to be able to acquire some of the property when Seth passed away, so we've had some of that property out there and we would like to do something to protect it and keep it productive and do something reasonable with it and some of those kinds of things. So I thought this would be a good jumping off point to get involved. I've been in, I've been on Loomis Street for five years. Prior to that, we lived in North Granby on Loomis Street for thirteen years, so.
I was gonna say, was it three fifty-three? Just to make sure you don't have to change this.
Actually, there was a five-year intermission in there where we went to Delaware for for reasons, but then we wanted to get back up here and we wound it up on the other side of the state line, as it were, so.
And you'll be available for work, weekend work, dooney, whatever might come up.
I don't know what the exact criteria for the job is, but um, yeah, I mean, I've got some flexibility in time, sure.
And I'm not sure what their meeting schedule is gonna be yet, cause you're a number number three.
Right, I think we're trying to get to five yet, so you're right, I don't know.
Gonna try and and see, spread the word and, you know, friends get them.
Well, Shane's out here, we can put him on.
Yeah.
I think technically there's Krista. She was.
Oh, that's true.
There's two more.
That's true, and. Okay. So. Any questions?
Doug. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do appreciate you responding both of you very much. Looking for a motion to appoint Martha Kane and Philip Price.
Second.
To the Open Space Committee, Subcommittee of the Conservation Commission for the term ten twenty twenty-five to six thirty twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Moblog on here.
And you both need to be sworn in in the Town Clerk's office anytime you can get in there.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. All right, before you can uh, vote on anything. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We must acknowledge where we're up two and down one. We must acknowledge the resignation of Jack Don Cody from the Economic Development Commission. Due to personal reasons, that's unfortunate. Um. And immediately following now, some discussion on the composition of the members with the um. Twenty twenty-three, we grew that commission to nine, um, all voting members. And little by little, they have been. Resigning due to personal work-related, family-related reasons, and we are down to how many active now? Five. Uh, I did have to write about this. What I proposed was reducing it to five with two associates, so he can still have the opportunity for additional. Workhorse power if we can grow that up again. Your thoughts?
I asked this exact question when we did reappointments, so. Yeah, I think.
No, my only, my only question was, was there any language? Was there any que- any lang-?
Yeah.
Anything in the language? The actual staff.
No. Yeah, that's fair enough.
I'm fine.
So we could have up to nine.
We just have to. I'll work with, just have to work with the clerk to make sure that we got it all straight in their system for whose terms are what.
Correct.
With all these people coming and going, we may have to, we may actually have to just re, it may make sense just to reconstitute that board and reappoint. You know what I mean?
Stated as this is the new.
Cause, but I also don't want to run afoul. If people were that are still on the board, which is now going to be five, that were appointed to a three-year term back in. Whenever we did that.
Yeah, five years.
What's that?
But your term is five.
I think we gotta have that, maybe we carry that to another meeting, but have that discussion, cause if it's a five-member board, I don't know how you want to compose it. To make sure that you have some, you know, that that it's staggered and and with a five-member board, probably three-year terms are probably more appropriate, but I.
It's five, five members.
What do I have? I'm twenty-six, two at twenty-eight, I'm twenty-nine, I'm twenty-four. I'm pretty spread out.
I happen to be.
Yep.
Um, but I guess you can determine with, who are the two that are the same?
Um, Stephen and Greg. Greg Samuelson.
So I guess you want to have a discussion with them, who might want to change their term, just change their term by, so that everybody is a staggered expiration.
What, what year is that?
Eight.
Twenty-eight.
Well, you're at five. You're at five. You're at your five voting members right now.
Which I'd rather.
Are these five?
Well, actually, well, it was coming up. We can just every, every term.
I I don't think it's a big deal to have. And I don't, I don't think it a big deal where you have, if you have these five members. You have two coming up in twenty-eight. Yeah.
And this group is acting.
You can always consider if it works out, changing your meeting date and time also, if that's the problem. As long as there's space available. It's tough. Tough for the cast, for sure. Um, so that is suitable to you, five plus two associates.
Yes. Anybody that's listening to this meeting, please go ahead and apply, be an associate.
So I guess we need a motion to change the composition to five regular members and two associates. For the Economic Development Commission.
So. Doug Morgan, yeah.
And we'll make that effective today so that we can acknowledge and approve a two hundred dollar donation from Jay Wigglesworth to be deposited Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund and the Southwick Animal Control Gift Fund. We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Doug Anderson, yes.
And Belgium approved nine hundred twenty-three dollars and eleven cents donation from the Southwick Firefighters Association who'd be deposited into the Southwick Fire Department Gift.
So, okay.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Doug Anderson, yes.
And other new business. I have nothing. I have nothing new.
Nothing for me.
Julie, Betty started today as the new DPW manager. Also Kristi, that are complimented. And the clerical union revoked, they haven't done the letter yet, but they did vote to combine our half day before Christmas and half day before New Year's to be combined into a full day, the day after Christmas. Um, but we'll be closed the day after Christmas. I hear that. You all have to give your blessing.
So blessed.
All right, we have to take a vote on that. It's an agenda item of future meeting. We have a little time for that.
Okay, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, no, it's right now. It's customary. It's done every year, yeah. I didn't, I didn't hear any broad opposition, but we gotta probably vote.
Old business. Does anyone have any updates to select articles and amendments? No movement on it. Okay, other old business. Um, I have, of course, master plan updates, um. The I sent you something to, I don't know if you had a chance to see it. Um, I sent you something today with the strange that developed all of the actions so that you kind of put together in your minds how those suggested, recommended actions came about, what they were driven by, the thought process to those. There's also a climate change action that was recommended in the Conservation Commission. This was on their recommended actions. To organize hybrid workshops, discussions, public forums with guest speakers that aim to educate residents regarding climate change, the impact of changing temperature and rainfall, floodplains, localized flooding, et cetera. Resources include the local universities. This was under the Conservation Commission. They didn't feel that was, um, under their purview. And they recommended it be transferred to the Climate Change Committee. In the absence of a Climate Change Committee, that would be us. We can agree to accept it as the interim Climate Change Committee and then delegate it to someone else if and when those actions are addressed. Or in the meantime, we could give it to the library to look into adding to their online educational seminars that they do.
Why wouldn't conservation do something? That's all.
Well, as it says, they don't feel that it's falls under the, like they said, it is important to the Conservation Commission, but it truly falls under the umbrella of the climate change. And there is a climate change committee in the recommended options to to create. And that, again, falls under us to make that decision as the appointing authority. We aren't there to have that discussion yet. Unless I said we could accept this right now under the climate change umbrella and then deal with it if and when we get to that as a priority. Or we could suggest it to the library. And if they do it, then.
Why, why wouldn't it not just go into a placeholder for when that committee?
Well, so I said we can do that.
Not, but yeah, if you send it to the library. Just saying, tail it until we get a committee.
It may, we are in the interim, I believe that.
We've never voted to create that.
Correct.
So we can't be until we vote to create that. I think this should just be kind of held in bayance by MPIC until such a time as that committee exists. And we've had time to figure out what that would, if we want to do that or have a climate change committee or assign those duties to another committee.
Any problem with me suggesting it to, uh, then where? Anyway.
Yeah, I don't think it falls under the library at all. Any more than the conservation.
I was looking for.
Correct, but then it becomes an action item for the library that they're gonna get measured again. So I would, if she wanted to do something like that.
For the library just for public education and a, and a. Not, not towards enough.
Sure, be free to do that now. I just don't, I don't, I don't want to be, I don't.
Uh, we're not dictating. I said it could be a suggestion to the library. And if she's listening, she's got the suggestion. So we will hold it on the MP. And other master plan, I hope next week we can actually have some further discussion on the actions related to the strategies and those that have been completed and hopefully get some agreement that we can at least. So let's plan on that for next week. And that's it for me. Under old business. Doug, anything?
Uh, not just under scheduling for future November tenth. I do not believe I can be in attendance, so I can maybe remember.
Okay. Are you available to, to do it every day if necessary? Do you want to?
You'll probably have to do without me. I, I, uh, out of town, be back late Tuesday, leaving Wednesday to the rest of.
Okay.
Now, they all think I have this, uh, beta has started, wrote it down. And I was originally shooting for a November-ish report.
Okay. Minutes. Uh, acknowledging the, the open session minutes from September twenty-second. And you have a revision to it on the national last page, I think. Um, we were just talking about seven, seven, top longer growth in this mix in prior conversation. That's the only change. To that. It wasn't, it was included in the previous. It was just all mixed.
Well, flashback to old business, there isn't one doing that.
Not that we have had reported. You got a good chance to review those from twenty-second, okay?
Both go first.
We'll settle that, Danielle.
Doug Morgan, yes.
Okay, and then the nine twenty-nine minutes.
Downstairs.
The nine twenty-nine minutes, there was a note in the middle on the discussion actually regarding the master plan. A very lengthy discussion we were having on the master plan, action items, et cetera. Um, it was, we all had important points we wanted in there and Margaret's having a hard time pulling them out. So I had suggested that we not try to do that and just refer to the entire recording of the discussion rather than try to pull out everybody's favorite remarks. Is that okay with you all? To do that?
Sure.
Then we can accept the nine twenty-nine minutes with that adjustment. Can I have a motion for that? Nine twenty-nine as amended.
Second.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And now we are reviewing the executive session meeting minutes for September twenty-ninth, twenty-five.
Make a motion for the executive session minutes of September twenty-ninth, twenty-first.
We'll call about Danielle.
Doug Morgan, yes.
We are acknowledging payables warrant two six oh nine B dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred one thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Acknowledging payroll warrant number two six zero one zero dated October sixth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars, fifty-seven cents and acknowledging payables warrant twenty-six ten B dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and forty cents. We will be moving into executive session tonight. Uh, that promotion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, number three, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining, litigation. If an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and we will not be reading the discussing.
Second. Doug Morgan, yes.
Thank you, everybody.